Today or tonight, and I would like to open the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, September 5th, 2024, at 7:02 PM. The first item is roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner McDonald?
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler?
Lord, we mean today to collect matters of business. Get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I have a few tonight because we've got such a great crowd, and I know that some people don't use Facebook, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to let y'all know about a few things. So, in an effort to keep Fairview beautiful, we have a new codes enforcer. So, we just want to make sure that everyone knows that the grass height is an issue. So, if you get a letter in the mail, just mow your grass. Signed permits will be needed for garage sale signs, political signs, and any temporary sign. If you need help with that, just call our codes department, and Marissa and Maria will help you go to the IDT program and get your signed permit if you'd like to do it online, or you can do it at the codes department in person. Real estate signs are only allowed from Friday at noon till Sunday at noon. Those are the off-site directional signs, not if you're selling your house and you have a for-sale sign in your house, those are fine. But if it's an off-site directional sign that directs you to an open house or any other real estate, those are only Friday at noon till Sunday at noon. If you find that your signs are missing, you might want to call the codes department because our enforcer is doing his job, and we're glad he's here to help make our city beautiful. Also, Williamson, Inc., which is the Chamber, the Williamson Chamber that Fairview's a part of, they are hosting an event on Tuesday, September 24th, at City Hall. There will be limited seating, so you might want to get here early if you'd like to come. They have asked for City Manager Tom Darty and myself to do a state of the city address, and also, we will have T-Dot here to speak and answer questions. So if anybody would like to come and, you know, take part in that, it will be from 9:00 to 10:30 on Tuesday, September 24th, right here. We've got, we're excited to have Zone Fairview, which is with our codes department, Wednesday, September 11th. It starts at 6:30 PM, right here at City Hall, and it's, please join us on September, Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, for our public kickoff event for the Zone Fairview Development Codes Process. We will provide an overview of the process, begin the discussion for long-term vision for our city, and answer any questions. So we would like to invite our community to come out to that so that everyone can be a part of our codes moving forward. I've been called many times and asked about our city center, and why the, you know, the machinery's been moved out, or, you know, why it seems like nothing's going on there. Well, you know, I'm not astute in all the process, but I do know that I talked to Dave McGowan about it, and he's the developer. He told me that, like, there are phases of the process. First phase is like excavation, and then you've got the piping. Well, there are different crews that do different things. So if you see one crew move out and another crew move in, it doesn't have anything to do with the project not happening, or the project, I've heard the project's changing to apartments or something like that. That's not happening. Once we have approved it, unless they come back and ask for something completely different, they can't change what we've approved. Also, if you've noticed, the pipes are out there, and the equipment's starting to come back for the next phase. So I just, you know, pass the word that it's still happening, everything's fine. I've had a lot of people asking me about Uncle Lenny's. It's scheduled to open the middle of the month, so I'm excited about that. I can't wait to try them out. The place, if you've seen it, they've done such a beautiful facelift, it looks gorgeous. So I'm excited to try their food. Okay, 30th anniversary of the Friends. I want to get this right. It's right after Williamson, Inc.'s event on Tuesday at 11:00 PM. I mean, 11:00 AM, right? 11 to 12 at the nature center. So right after we have the Williamson, Inc. event here, if you want to head on over to the nature center, then we will be celebrating the 30th anniversary of the Friends at Bowie Nature Park, which will be very exciting. So, I think that's, okay. And I just, you know, I just want to welcome everyone. We're excited that you're all here. I think we all have one common goal, and that's to make Fairview as wonderful as we can for our children and their children. So I think we have one common goal to get that, you know, get that done. So, we will go on to item number five.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
Just to point of clarification, then I'm going to turn it over to Patrick and let him tell us how we're going to proceed. After the town hall meeting last Tuesday night, I spoke with the developer, and after learning some things at the town hall meeting, and Vice Mayor Butler having a long list of items, I let the developer know that I did not support the plan as presented, and then I think subsequently, he decided that he wanted to make changes to the plan that I believe he had spoken to some other members up here about. And they sent an email to our city attorney, and I'm going to let him take it over.
Yes, commissioners and mayor, I received an email from the Barkees Developer Representative, Josh Rowland. Based on the meeting last week, the town hall meeting, they're asking for some more time to work on their plan and hopefully get it in a way that the BOC and the community can support it. They've specifically requested that it be removed from the agenda tonight and that it be put on an agenda 60 days from tonight. They also, upon me asking, they agreed to reimburse the city for any publication costs because the city had to incur certain costs tonight to advertise it. So we will not have to pay those costs twice. They'll reimburse us those costs. And so that's the request. Moving forward, it would be appropriate to, if you support it, to move, to remove those two items from the agenda, 10A and 10B, second it, and if the board approves it, we can adopt the agenda without those items on it.
Point of clarification, that would be 10B, 1 and 2.
Yes, I'm sorry. I had a prior version of the agenda, I think. Yes, 10B, 1 and 2. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Mayor, with that being said, and I would like to thank the developer for deciding to work with not just us, but the community. He actually, they stated in the email that they wanted to work with the community and the Board of Commissioners. So I urge them to get with the group. I spoke to Chad Warren, and if they wanted to get a couple of people together that wanted to head up their side of the group to meet with them, I think it would be great. And hopefully, they will come up with a plan that, once the citizens are happy with it, then they can bring it back to us, and we can move forward. I think everything will work smoother that way. So I will make a motion to approve the agenda, removing B, 1 and 2.
Second.
Mayor, if I may, just a couple of questions procedurally. I am of the opinion that, in order to capture a plan that meets the requirements in place, substantial changes will need to be made. And so, will the changes be substantial enough that need to go back to the planning commission? And so deferring it 60 days, do we need to send it back through? If the plan changes, planning commission needs to review the new submitted plan, in my opinion. So just procedurally, process wise? Or do we just wait, see what they submit, and then decide that night? Or?
I think that's what we need to do, because I don't know what the changes will be. I'm not privy to that, and I'm not sure the developer even knows that tonight. So I think we reset it for 60 days, and then depending on what we received and what our planning department recommends, I think that we'll have that hurdle across then and make a decision.
Thank you, sir. And then just one more question. At the town hall, we referenced that T-Dot would review plans. So is it possible with this additional time to have T-Dot implement and review, from their standpoint, their engineers?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any comments?
I would like to add to it, if I could, Mayor. And I, the developer may be requesting the 60 days, and that's fine and good. If the plan's not ready in 60 days, I'm pretty sure they would ask for another deferral. Don't know that for a fact, but I would just think if, we would want everything right before it was brought back to us. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, Vice Mayor Butler, that we get T-Dot involved, because we've, I mean, we agree there are traffic issues that need to be looked at, and if T-Dot can help us navigate that, then I think that's a great idea. I appreciate Commissioner Johnson having spoken with the developer and putting our citizens' concerns, which are very important to us, first and foremost, and I think this is a good idea. So please, if anyone's not on Facebook, please let them know that we want to hear from them. We want them to know what's going on, and we'll, I just am glad that we're all working together as a team, because I think that's, we all have a common goal. We want Fairview to be the best it can be for our children and their children. So. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
So, the approval of the agenda is for 1, with the removal of item 10B, 1 and 2. Item number 6, do we have any citizens' comments?
One tonight, Mayor, Kevin O'Brien.
Thank you. If you will state your name, address, and if you live in the city or county.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Brien, actually with the developer, 9005 Overlook Boulevard in Brentwood. I wanted to come tonight on behalf of the company, just make a public comment, public statement, let you guys know what we've heard and what we're thinking, in reference with what the board has just let us know, talk to you guys about the deferral of our final consideration of this project. We heard the town hall last week loud and clear. We want to take more time to work through the challenges that have come up. We want to hear, we have heard from the neighbors that have come to the meetings here. We want to continue to hear further from these members of the community, and are going to work for ways to do that. We also want to hear from the community at large and take some more time to do that so that we can address the concerns that come up as best as we can. As mentioned, Cortera is happy to reimburse the city for any of the public notice costs related to tonight's public hearing. And we do look forward to working with staff and the board and the community over the next few months to try and make this project the best for everyone it can be. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
That's all in the air.
Thank you. Item number 7, public announcements, awards, and recognition. Mr. Ross, item A, city events.
Good evening. Just want to remind everyone that on Saturday, September 21st, we're going to have Nature Fest at Bowie Nature Park. It's going to be from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. It's going to be free for the public, free parking. We have over 70 vendors. That's not including food vendors, petting zoo, bounce houses, hay rides, you name it. It's going to be a fun-filled day. Then, we also have several programs that are going on at Bowie Nature Park. There's several, so I encourage everyone to check out our social media page and our website for the list of programs. Then also, we're getting close to winter months. So we have a message alerting system called Nixle. So I strongly, we strongly encourage everyone to sign up for this. You will receive road closures, weather alerts, safety alerts, all, and it's all free. All you have to do is just simply text FVALERTS to 88877. Again, that's FVALERTS to 88877. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 8 is staff comments and monthly reports. A, City Manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. We have started the audit season. They came out last week and did some field work. So far, feel very positive. Our new finance director, Ben, has taken the majority of the lead, and I've kind of stepped in in places. They'll be coming out another, for another couple of days in November, and then hopefully the audit will be prepared by December 31st, and hopefully be ready to present to you guys in January. Also, I want to add one thing to the city address, well, two things. I just want to reemphasize that this is an event that was, we were approached by Williamson, Inc., that they wanted to put this event on, and it really is not, quote, "city event." And they've been in charge of all the marketing, all the organizing, all the getting together, and there's been a few things changed here lately, but I believe the information the mayor gave tonight was accurate to date. If there aren't any changes, we'll try to get that out as quickly as possible. But I think also, people need to realize, I believe this is a, you've got to purchase a ticket to attend, and I believe it's, if you're a member of the Williamson Chamber, I believe it's $10, and if you're not, it's $15. And these can be purchased at WilliamsonChamber.com. Last thing is, we have a BOZA and PC meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, at City Hall. The BOZA starts at 6:00 PM, and the PC Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Tom, thank you for clarifying. Since this is a chamber event that he was speaking about, there is a fee if you come. I neglected to state that, but it's $10 for chamber members and $15 if you're not. Okay. And they chose, since Williamson, Inc. was putting this on, they chose to change the venue, which we're going to have it at City Hall. You might have seen that it was at another venue site, but, and the reason we haven't, it just got put out is because everything just got finalized. So if people didn't find out about it until just recently, it's just because it just all got finalized. And thank you for bringing that up about, you know, the fees, so. Does anybody have any questions of our city manager? Okay. Item number 9, consent agenda. A, minutes from August 15th, 2024, Board of Commissioner work session, and B, minutes from August 15th, 2024, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move for approval of A and B. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 9, A and B, pass 5-0. Item 10, old business. 10A, rezoning southeast corner of the intersection of Fairview Boulevard and Cumberland Drive. At this point, we will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you're in the city or the county.
Mayor, I have no interest or involvement in this parcel directly, but I've worked with the property owners prior, so I'm going to excuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
All right, seeing no one here to speak on item 10A for the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. Item 10A, number 2, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-13, and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to the city of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 5.60 plus or minus acres of property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fairview Boulevard and Cumberland Drive, consisting of Williamson County tax map 046, parcel 108.05, from RS40 Single Family Residential to CMJ Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District. Property owner, S.W., Fairview Partners. If we have anyone here to represent, please come forward, and Mr. Greer, would you give us details?
This property is located at the corner of Cumberland Drive and Fairview Boulevard. It received a unanimous vote for, from the planning commission, and at the first hearing. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as Transition Corridor. The Transition Corridor notes appropriate land use are single-family detached residential office and civic institutional. The Transition Corridor classification lists two zone districts as appropriate, RS40, and a new district that would permit the adaptive reuse of existing structures. A new zone district focused on adaptively reusing existing buildings or requiring new development to have a residential form has not been adopted at this time. Therefore, the only appropriate zone is RS40, which is the current zone of the property. The primary conflict presented by only having one zone district as appropriate is that the listed appropriate land use of office and civic institutional are not permitted within RS40. Given the location of the property at the intersection of two primary roadways and the upcoming intersection improvements adjacent to this property, which will include signalization, the applicant feels the property is well-suited for a commercial development. Staff investigated the other future land use categories in the general area to determine how the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates other properties along Fairview Boulevard located at intersections. The next intersection to the north, Glen Haven Drive, and the next three intersections to the south at Old Franklin, King Road, and Overby are each surrounded by properties designated as commercial center. Although only a few of these properties contain commercial uses or are zoned commercially, it appears the 2040 envisioned commercial uses along smaller intersections along Fairview Boulevard, based on the classification of commercial center surrounding all directly adjacent intersections. Given the classifying of these many parcels as commercial center and not the intersection of Fairview Boulevard and Cumberland Drive seems inconsistent. Additionally, the intersection of Fairview and Cumberland will be better suited to handle traffic due to the proposed roadway improvements that will occur as part of an ongoing T-Dot project along Fairview Boulevard. Our staff recommendation was a favorable recommendation to the planning commission and a recommendation to approve to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
My name is Hunter Dale with Dale &amp; Associates. Address is 516 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee. I want to dive in unless you guys have questions, but I'll be glad to answer anything maybe.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All right. Does anyone have any questions of the representative? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 10A, 2 passes, 4-0. I'm sorry, 4 with 1 recusal. Thank you. Item number 11, new business. A, Resolution 40-24, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated and the city of Fairview, Tennessee. City Manager Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. This is a contract that is going to provide design, architecture, and engineering services for our Fairview Historical Village Park project. The goal at the end of this is to be, have a design that is desirable for the community, have a projected cost of what it's going to take to do this, and also have solutions for any challenges that engineering or architectural studies provide us. We do have, Kimley Horn does have representation here if anybody has questions, but this, the initial start will be seeking stakeholders and community input, and then go on from there on designing the park.
With the representative from Kimley Horn. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all again. I didn't really have anything prepared, so if you all have any questions about the contract, I'm happy to answer them for you this evening. But yeah, I think I was here a month or so ago, kind of giving an overview of our approach to the park, how we anticipate going about the design, and like Tom said, the goal at the end of it is to have a design and have a potential cost, the park and the design that we can all move forward with next year. So, and we also talked about looking at grant opportunities. So all of what we're doing and all of what's included in this contract is to prep us for that moving forward.
It is really exciting that we are going to do great things with this Triangle property. The, I've been the vice chairman of the Historic Association for 18 years out here, and we, Dr. Neil Rice, myself, and several others, it was a vision to bring the history of the Bowie sisters and Bowie Park and the Triangle School, Jingo Post Office, Boone Street Clinic to life, and let our community know about the history. We have really exciting events out there now, which I hope everyone can see in the newspaper, and then we also announce it here. We have the Fairview Community Theater. They do plays out there now, which if you haven't been to one, they're really great. So I encourage you to go out there and see one. so I encourage you to, to go out there and see one. Also, while you do that, you can, uh, view and see all the, uh, fun stuff in the, in the Triangle School. At Christmas time, we have, with Sean, uh, Carson, we have, um, a, uh, Christmas caroling where it's not just him singing, it's interactive, and Vice Mayor Butler's children have gotten on stage, and, um, you know, I think Helen is quite the, the singer. She gets up there and sings and dances, and we have just a great time.
Takes after her dad.
Yep, takes after her dad. And, uh, Dr. Rice, with his beautiful baritone voice, he gets up there and sings some Elvira and different things, but it's, it's so much fun, and we will, as Richard spoke about earlier, we will have another one. It, it's kind of a fun day, the, uh, the first Saturday in December where we get to do, um, the, the Christmas parade live now, and we get to do the tree lighting, and in between that, um, everyone can come out and view the buildings and all the hard work that went into them. They've won several awards with the Heritage Foundation and Historic Franklin, uh, so we're just really proud of these buildings, and right now, um, Craig Cropper is working on these, uh, the Triangle School to do some much-needed restoration that, you know, has, um, kind of, you know, needed, been needed for a while, so we're excited that he's, um, working on the, on the building, and we just encourage everyone to take the opportunity to come out and see it. So, what, um, we are hoping to do is, um, add to it, and a vision is, uh, a farmer's market. The farmer's market right now has to meet out in front of, you know, where Messick's Chiropractic and the Donut Shop is because they can't meet on Williamson County property anymore, so we're excited to have a vision to put the farmer's market there, and also an outdoor amphitheater where we can have music and have just special events for the community where you can bring your lawn chairs and your, you know, blankets and listen to some good music. So, um, it's just in the beginning phases, and we're just, you know, just excited for that property to, you know, to see, um, the community be able to enjoy it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions from the board?
Mayor, I will just ask, I guess to see, this is the initial investment or initial down payment on a project at, at Triangle, which is amazing, hundred thousand dollar investment. I guess budget-wise, are we prepared to take on what's at the end of it, if it's a million or two million, or we hope for grants, or?
Uh, we, we do, the hundred grand, the hundred thousand, we, would be a bond expenditure. Uh, they would not come out of operating funds, it's, uh, for, um, facility upgrades.
But so, you know, it, when the estimated costs come in, when they're completed, if it's a two million dollar project or a million dollar project, have we, are we projecting or forecasting debt, or?
Well, no, we'll be working with Kimley Horn as far as looking, funding opportunities, grants, um, and a lot of it is just basically, the main thing right here is just seeing exactly what we're looking at and any of the challenges that we have to overcome with topography, uh, drainage and such.
That's fair, just for, to me, it's, uh, if we're going to spend the hundred grand, are we prepared for the full commitment? Are we planning? It just, it's a big, uh, spend to just to review, but it's good, I'm just making sure we're.
I have, there are funds available through the bond, and then, and we will be seeking additional funding if, if needed.
Also, I did want to point out that Dr. Neil Rice has already gotten, gotten a sixty thousand dollar grant, which put in the, um, parking that we just, uh, finished, the concrete parking, so that we don't have to park in the grass, which is exciting, and also he's in the process right now, which we just completed, um, another grant for a hundred thousand dollars. So, the grants are a big deal, and they will cover a lot of what's going on out of the Triangle School.
Mayor, would that, would that grant qualify for the, the design expenditures?
I'm not sure, but I'll check into that. I know that, um, we had looked into, um, anything that needed to be updated, um, more parking, uh, sidewalks, bridge, so I will check into that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes?
There is grants out there for farmer's markets, and Middle Tennessee Electric, uh, does have some grants for sidewalks and that type thing to and from the, out to the farmer's market from the Triangle School, so, uh, those are small amounts, but, uh, you know, they'll help out, you know, so.
And also, I did want to mention that I'm meeting with a private donor that is willing to, um, put quite a bit of money into the farmer's market, so when we get finished with, um, Kimley Horn, we will also be working with that person as well. So, it's just some great things happening for our community.
Mayor, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
I know the last time you were here, you went in-depth with everything, but just for those here and everyone watching at home that might have missed that, can you just recap briefly the timeline of kind of the process of it and when the expectations for the comple- you know, the completion of your, of this portion of it will be?
Yeah, great question. So, the initial step will be meetings, stakeholder meetings, uh, meeting with the Historic Association, getting feedback from what the community is hoping to see and get out of this park, not just now, but in the future, um, you know, how it should function for the community. So, we'll have the stakeholder meetings, we'll also have a public outreach meeting, so our goal is to put a design together, bring that to the public outreach meeting, have people come, give feedback, make revisions to that design based on that meeting, um, and then have illustrative plans and three D imagery, you kind of get, uh, an eyes' perspective walking through the site, pulling all that together. We would hope to do that by the end of this year because that would put us in a really good place for the LPRF grant that TDEC offers, so that, those twenty twenty-five round of grants start in January of next year, and if we can get in with all of the stuff that we've worked on this year, we'll be in a really good spot for that application. That is a fifty-fifty match grant. We've done many of them before, um, and it's really helped communities around the, not Middle Tennessee, all of Tennessee, uh, get projects like this off the ground.
Thank you, that sounds amazing. All the grants we can get and public support, it's all encouraged.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eleven B, passes five zero.
Thank you so much, we're really excited.
Thank you, so are we. Item eleven B, resolution forty-one dash twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the work order between Reagan Smith Associates LLC and the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Greer?
Our previous contract with Reagan Smith for the Northwest Highway realignment project and intersection, uh, has come to fruition. They have submitted to us their preliminary design, and this is our next step. This amendment includes, uh, final development plans, right-of-way development plans, right-of-way acquisition, and gets us all the way up to the bidding phase. Um, Reagan Smith will provide the bid phase services for a, a construction bidding as their final deliverable of this contract, and it's just a, an extension to the original contract that, uh, was previously signed as an amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions representing this tonight.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do any of the board have questions for Mr. Greer?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Mr. Greer, what section, um, is this pertaining to? So where would it stop? Is it the entire design?
This is not the entire design. This is the portion that the city has acquired property for, uh, where it intersects with Highway ninety-six. It's on that end. For those that are familiar, it's approximately where the Really Type Bridge is, uh, that will be replaced during this, um, piece. For an exact address, the project begins between seventy-three fifty-three Northwest Highway and seventy-three fifty-five Northwest Highway and goes out to Highway ninety-six. The city purchased a, uh, piece of property a couple of years ago to allow for this project to realign Northwest Highway to make an, a ninety-degree intersection with Highway ninety-six due to safety issues that have presented themselves over the history of Fairview with the very acute angle of Northwest Highway's current intersection.
Thank you, sir. So is this going to, um, essentially the Bell Haven Seminal Project start point or past that property? Where that parcel starts, if that makes sense?
Our city project ends about a hundred and fifty feet shy of the Bell Haven, uh, property frontage along Northwest Highway.
Okay. And so they, they make reference to nine point four million in road permits. Is that an estimate of the entire project?
That is the estimate for the entire project. This, uh, specific piece at the end, uh, our cost estimate that was delivered with the previous, um, amendment to this contract was four point nine million.
For this section?
For this section with a signalized interchange on Highway ninety-six.
So this is additional three hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the?
That, that would include, be included within that four point nine million number.
That's what we're adding now. So what did that initial hundred and twenty or so, oh, hundred ninety-two, five, was that surveying and then preliminary?
It was surveying, preliminary design, um, mainly preliminary design. There's a, there's significant, um, challenges across this with, uh, two streams that are impacted, uh, based on crossing one and then one, uh, within the right-of-way that was deemed a stream by TDEC, although most of us drive by it and it looks like a ditch, it was deemed a stream by TDEC, and so, um, having those impacts and, and working through the process with the state on those have, have been costly.
Thank you, sir, and just, I guess I'm just talking numbers out loud to, for that, we've had prior discussions of the next phase or the next section. Our goal was to have it all at one time. Are we abandoning that based off timing and proceeding with the front parcel for the fire station plans and such?
At this point, uh, our goal as the city is to get this piece completed. Uh, we have the adjacent project with the fire department that is going on the parcel that the city acquired out there, and so for us to get this, for us to get the fire department completed, we have to get our roadway completed first, and so trying to get that section, and then, um, if there is, uh, monies that are presented by a developer at a later date that can be used to help connect, uh, from the Belvoir subdivision down to this project would be my expectation.
Thank you, sir, and then same thing on, on finances, this bond projection money for what this will be spent from, then also the build.
Correct.
Just to go off that real fast.
Ethan, does this also include the design of the, uh, signalization?
This does include the sign of the signalization of Highway ninety-six at Northwest Highway.
Thank you.
Does this, the cost of this project come out of that money that we had set aside for the, the culvert replacement and some of the other paving that we had around the city, or is this separate?
Uh, separate, the culvert is the American Rescue Plan monies, uh, some of the paving is coming out of bond, but it's a separate, it's not, about the five, five million is allocated towards this intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Greer? So, this project, just for landmark sake, is near Whiskey Fire, if people know where that is, okay. Was it the intent to do the whole project as one?
It would be greatly appreciated and probably more cost-effective to the city to do the whole project as, at one point, uh, however, we have had a lack of funding from a developer that I believe had originally felt to contribute, and they have not contributed to this point.
Is there more than one developer involved in this?
There, the city and there are two developers that are involved.
Has one of the developers decided to contribute to this project?
One of the developers still plans to build their piece of Northwest Highway through their project.
Do you foresee the other developer coming back to ask if they can do their portion?
Apparently that was a condition that was put on their, uh, project by the Planning Commission to seek a development agreement by, with the Board of Commissioners for roadway improvements along Northwest Highway.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eleven B, passes five zero. Item number twelve is Roundtable, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner McDonald?
Uh, short tonight, just, uh, thanks for everyone coming out. I know you probably all had a lot to say, um, just keep that in mind in sixty days from now, if that stays on that schedule. But yeah, still appreciate you all coming out and, uh, look forward to hearing what you have to say in sixty days. Reach out any time between now and then if you'd like to talk about it. Thanks.
Mr. Greer?
I know the mayor touched on it at first, but I just wanted to remind everyone, the Zone Fairview, uh, Development Code process, September the eleventh, uh, at six thirty PM in this room. You know, a lot of people look out at the twenty forty plan and, and what that envisions, and this will be our opportunity to speak as a community, to come together and put that together in actually a regulatory document for our new zoning ordinance, where the objectives that were mentioned in, in the twenty forty plan by citizens across the, across Fairview will actually be able to see those realized in a regulatory document that we can use for, as planning staff, as our requirements for developments as they come forward. This process is about a year long. This is our kickoff, uh, meeting. There will be a subsequent Planapalooza, uh, towards the end of October, uh, and then several other community outreach events, but I encourage you to, to come out and, and speak and listen to what our consultant that we've hired has to, to say, and, and they're very receptive to hearing what the community wants, and they've also brought on board as a subconsultant of theirs, Common Ground, who actually wrote our twenty forty comprehensive plan, and so they are working to combine the objectives that, that we want as a city in the twenty forty plan into our regulatory documents. And then also to Commissioner McDonald's point about keep an eye out for items in the next sixty days. If you are a neighbor of this project, the Bark East project, and you got a letter in the mail, uh, we do have public notice requirements, you will get another letter in the mail. Those have to go out fifteen days prior to a public hearing, and so you will get another letter in the mail, and you will be informed of that, of that meeting if you're not consistently looking for our, uh, beautiful agendas on our website. looking for our beautiful agendas on our website.
Thank you. I noticed that our candidate for State House, Lee Reeves, is here. So, before we finish, because I don't want us to finish before we acknowledge, would you like to come up and say something to the group?
Wasn't expecting that, but I appreciate, appreciate that recognition, and I won the Republican primary August 1st, and Fairview really came out, and I appreciate that very much, and happy to talk to anybody after this meeting. November's coming quick, and I appreciate your vote again. And I noticed behind you, Mayor, City of Fairview, progress and prosperity. I know that everybody assembled in this room, in the audience, and on the dais, and at the tables here, has that as a goal, and it's a great one. And Fairview is poised to do some great things, and so I appreciate you calling me up, and look forward to chatting after. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner McDonald spoke of, and the citizens that were here this evening, thank each and every one of you for being here. I want to thank Chad Warren, that we, we spoke a couple of times over the last week, and actually before the meeting tonight, and I hope he and the developer are going to get together, and he can get a couple more people from the citizens group to meet with them, and they can work out the issues that the people surrounding this project have. I think, as I stated before, as it currently sits, I'm not in support of the project as it's currently drawn up. I think they are willing to go back to the drawing board, and one of the real key things that, that got me last Tuesday night was when I found out that Commissioner Butler, Vice Mayor Butler, had 19 pages of stuff that didn't really line up with where this project needed to be. And so, I'm waiting to hear back on all those issues, and just want the citizens to know that there's nothing that is ever a done deal. So, everybody that was just scared that this thing was going to pass, just know, it's not, nothing is done until the votes are taken. So, just, just know that we, the five of us sitting up here, we hear you, and we want to continue to represent you the best we can. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Board, thanks for the people coming out, and we do listen. And as Commissioner Johnson just said, I also was not in favor of the way it was drawn up, and we do listen. And anyway, I want to thank the officers that are here tonight, and also thank the full city staff for everything that they do. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everyone that's here tonight. Zone Fairview, September 11th. Zone Fairview, September 11th. Can't say it enough, be here, tell your friends, it's a huge, a huge thing for Fairview, a big, a big step for us. And then, happy birthday to our Economic Development Director, Patty Carroll. I think she's at the beach, but she's probably watching, so happy birthday.
I would like to just thank Tom and Ben for working so hard on our audit. It's really exciting to have a CFMO for 10 years, and then him become the city manager, because he understands the financials of our, of our city. And he puts everything together so well for us that it makes it very easy for this board to see where we're at, where we're going, and what's being spent. And I can tell you, he and Ben do a great job, so I really appreciate that. And all of our city staff, we have such a great staff. If you don't know them, get to know them. If you need anybody, and, you know, with a code, if you have a codes issue, you know, Ethan's always willing to help, Rachel. Richard does such a great job with all of our events. Don't miss Nature Fest, it's going to be amazing. And then right on into Christmas, and then we'll, I'm, I'm sure we're already planning for July 3rd again, which, you know, like I said, won the Main Street Media Award for, you know, the, the event out here, I guess, what was it called? The special event, or best community event? So, it was, this is two years in a row that it's won first place, so that's really exciting. And, you know, Richard does such a great job putting all of that together, and also communicating with everyone to let us know what's going on in Fairview, not just events, but like you said, the NICSOL program. I encourage everyone, you, you'll know about recs, you'll know about things that are going on in the city, and that's, that's really important, so. Mr. Carter does such a great job. I've enjoyed having him as our city attorney. He works very hard for Spring Hill and for us, so I, I appreciate him always being willing to sit down and talk to us and make sure that we have all the legal information we need. So, I, I touched on several things at the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, I do want to let everybody know that I always, at the end of the meeting, talk about keeping Fairview beautiful, and let's help pick up trash and not throw it out, but I'm so excited that we have a codes enforcer now. I know, I get calls all week long about, you know, this house is abandoned, or this house has got, you know, trash all around it, or, you know, are the grass being too high, or just, you know, I want us all to work together as a community. If you have a neighbor that might have, you know, some health issues or something, maybe we can just help them get their grass taken care of. And let's, you know, I know that we want what's best for our community, and we're all in this together. So, I appreciate everyone coming out. I know that we can get passionate about things, but I'm glad that we can come together, and I think we did with this project. I don't think any of us up here were comfortable with it in a whole. You know, I had parts that I liked, parts that I didn't like, and I think everyone up here felt the same way. So, let's get together as a community, and over the next two months, make sure that they do what they need to do to be a good partner with our city and our citizens. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.